Call to meeting the order. Mrs. Burns, roll call please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle is absent with prior notice. Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marerton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The board met in executive session this evening. Prior to this meeting, you discussed matters of employment and matters related to litigation. The district mission statement. The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner. Mr. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. We have our first of the month meeting where we introduce you to our artwork that's here on display. This month is Maple Point. Ms. Mason's art classes have a variety of artwork, oil, pastel, scribble art applied to while listening to a melody and beat to create an expressive abstract of faces, various techniques using pencils, charcoal, pastels, and watercolors, along with acrylic paint on different surfaces, abstract images from their study of Georgia O'Keeffe and Franz Mark. It really is impressive just the depth and variety that occurs in an art class in a middle school setting prior to these students getting into their high school art specialties. And so, we thank Ms. Hanson for her display of her students' work. The enrollment report is attached to the superintendent's report this month. Once again, we'll spotlight this at a future meeting, but once again, our best communities for music designation was awarded to the Nishamani School District. And actually, today, I received a letter from Pedro Rivera, Secretary of Education, writing to us, offering his sincerest congratulations to you, your school board, and your district's music faculty on being recognized as a best community for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. He talks about the power that music has in the lives of youth and indicates that this recognition comes at a time when music education and musical extracurriculars are at their most vulnerable. Applauds us for our support of the music program and indicates that of the 623 schools recognized nationwide, 92 of them were in Pennsylvania. So, he's proud of that as the leader of the state, and we're proud of our particular programs here in the music area. So, congratulations to everyone. We also have in the music track here, a jazz festival coming up, secondary school, April 10th. That's a seven o'clock show, and I think that that's tomorrow, tomorrow night, seven o'clock, in the auditorium. Pequesting Middle School is producing another school-wide mural. All of the projects started last year with every student in grades five through eight creating a music-themed tile piece that's going to be outside their auditorium. Incoming fifth-grade students this year also contributed, and the reveal will be held on a date soon to come. And so, we look forward to that new piece of art that's going to be in the Pequesting School. Pequesting Middle School Select Choir, staying with the music theme, performed in Pittsburgh recently for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association and the National Association of Music Educators Eastern Regional Division Annual Conference. That includes 12 states from the eastern portion of the United States. Music educators had a 200 submissions, two different, 200 submissions were part of the selection process, and our middle school students were the only middle school students represented there. And so, they had a wonderful performance, standing ovation is what I'm told, and a really great experience for our students. I haven't seen this sign yet, but some of you've talked about the new Catalyst Experiential Large LED Billboard that's outside the old Lincoln Highway and Oxford Valley Road. I hear you can't miss it. I see a picture of it in my report here, but...
You can see it out the door.
But the nice thing about it is on that large display now, they will be featuring our artwork. So, the artwork each month is going to rotate. It's going to be, it's going to sync up with the artwork that's here. So, Maple Point artwork is also being displayed this month on that LED sign. And it's nice for, there's a handful of art pieces that get rotated into the image there. And so, that's nice, a nice collaboration with the school district. If you're not here, you may be at the Share the Keys program that's happening right now at the high school. It's a nice opportunity for parents and students to hear a little bit more about safe driving. That's taking place this evening at the high school. And also, on the safety front, the state has a new anonymous tip line, Safe to Say Something, and we're rolling that tip line out this week. Parents are going to hear more about it. It's going to be posted on our website. Mr. Stanley did a wonderful job of taking what was a very complicated hour-long state video and Nishamani, making it Nishamani-specific in a much more condensed format that I think parents and students will be able to use effectively to understand what the program's about and how they can access it. And so, we're looking forward to rolling that out this week to our students. Our teachers are aware of it. They'll have some talking points for students, and parents will be informed as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This month on Board Docs, there's a report from Mr. May and the Assistant to Superintendent and Director of Administration. So, if you want to take a look at that, it's on Board Docs. Tonight, we have one presentation which Mr. Jones is going to handle. It's the 2019-20 Nishamani School District Budget Update.
Okay. Good evening. This was a presentation that the Business Operations Committee heard and discussed at the last meeting. We are in a year-long process, really, of developing a school budget. It starts back in the fall and moves us through into the preliminary budget in the January, February timeframe, and now, we're trying to work from a preliminary budget to a final proposed budget, and that needs to happen by June. So, I want to share with you the information that we talked about that evening. This is that calendar. We just had our April meeting, and we're now looking forward to a May Business Operations Committee meeting. It's going to be on May 8th, a Wednesday night, where we'll continue this conversation. The highlights of the budget include, as part of our budget assumptions, we know that PESR's rate is going to go up a little bit more. That little bit of an increase is significant when you think in terms of just the cost associated with salaries here. We have an Act One increase that allows for 2.3% and $2.8 million. That was not included in our preliminary budget when we adopted that back in February. And the state aid was originally, at the time of the preliminary budget, determined, or at least we assumed for it to stay flat. But there was, to our surprise, an increase both in our basic education funding as well as our special education funding that's being proposed by the governor. That's yet to be finalized, but right now, we do have increases on both sides. The history of our budget is laid out there in terms of the total budget. The highlighted portion was the preliminary budget, $188 million. That's a 3.8% increase, but that's the number that we had to work from because at the preliminary budget time, this page here was part of that document, and it shows an $8.5 million gap. So, when we left in February at the last, at that budget adoption meeting, we had $8.5 million that we had to work on to try to get to a final budget. And one of the things that we need to be clear about is this very first line talks about PESRs and utilizing fund balance to address PESRs. $1.75 million is recommended and was recommended at our April meeting to the Business Operations Committee. It's down from $2 million. We've been taking $2 million out of fund balance, budgeting for $2 million each year to address the PESRs increase. And so, we're trying to taper that down so that we are not as reliant on the fund balance to address what is an annual expense. If we take that $1.7 million out, that leaves us with $6.8 million still to address. And then, we went through a series of cuts, and all of these were explained at the Business Operations Committee meeting, from facilities to curriculum and instruction to special education. There were some increases with respect to some security issues and the technology budget. And we ended up with $2.8 million more that we were able to take out of the preliminary budget. In addition, I talked about additional revenue as well as some additional anticipated interest income, and that left us, as we presented in April, with a 3.1, $3.2 million gap. And again, I want to remind you, $1.7 million is still part of that gap because we're using fund balance. But in terms of a number that we're working with right now, we're looking at that $3.2 This is a hard slide to see in this room, but it does show a progression of fund balance. The long red line shows that we're trying to budget more carefully, more appropriately, and not rely on fund balance as a way to balance a budget for the upcoming year. And so, you can see that that number has gone down significantly these last couple of years. But you also notice with the smaller red line, $2 million, $2 million, $2 million, and now, $1.75 million. And that's a heavy reliance on fund balance as a way of balancing a budget related to the PESRs issue. We do have that $3.1 million still left in an orange line at the bottom because we still have to address it. It can't be left there. It's something that has to be addressed in terms of how we're going to fund the rest of the gap. If we include an Act One increase, and this was presented to the board, and no decision has been made with respect to whether this will or will not happen, but if we do put an Act One increase into the tax levy, that changes the revenue line and ultimately changes the gap. Now, we're down at about $380,000, I think, $1,000, close to $400,000. So, this is the three side-by-side. Preliminary budget, preliminary budget as presented on April 2nd, and a preliminary budget then with an Act One increase makes it somewhat manageable. We still have a lot of work to do to get $400,000 out, and it's still a heavy reliance on the tax. And then, none of those decisions are made, and that, and so, our goal would be to continue to look to cut out of that budget so that we have as manageable an opportunity to get to the 1920 school year. So, those are the things that we'll continue to look at: expenditures, adjustments to revenue, a decision with respect to Act One, and consideration with respect to fund balance. But here's the problem, and the board's going to talk about this a little bit today. You'll hear it today, and then, you'll hear it again when we have our April regular meeting because we're going to have to act on a tax appeal that is part of the Oxford Valley Mall properties. We are being informed by our solicitor that there is an effort to get to an agreement with respect to a tax appeal with those properties around the Oxford Valley Mall area that would result in a nearly $800,000 reduction in taxes from the properties around the ring there. That $800,000 would come out effective immediately for this upcoming year, 1920. So, everything I just talked about now has a new, nearly $1 million wrinkle added to it in terms of a shortfall. And not only that, but it would continue each of the years thereafter. So, it's money that we're going to lose from our tax revenue, our tax base, and it's money that would be lost going forward. This is because of the status of the properties there and their appeal of the fact that they don't have the same business opportunities that they've had in the past. In addition, there are assessments, appeals that will go back to prior years, and that's a total of another $760,000 approximately, to be paid out in equal installments, not this July, but the following two Julys. So, that's another $350,000 the system here will have to absorb in terms of a loss revenue for the following two years. The ultimate at the, the end there is that I took out $792,000, that $800,000 of tax revenue, out of the line where we had revenue, and temporarily have placed it into the unassigned fund balance. I said to the board on April 2nd that, at least at this point, given how late in the game we're being informed about this and not having a whole lot of time to react, that one avenue would be to return to fund balance and to see if we can cover that from our fund balance. But ultimately, that's not the long-term solution, if that is the solution even for the upcoming July, because that's something that's going to be a recurring problem, just like the PESRs is. And so, we need to absorb that somehow into our system. So, this is the, this is the picture that we walked away April 2nd from. This is, this is what's currently the status of our budget development, and this is what we're going to be picking up and talking about when we get back to our May 8th meeting. How do we resolve a budget that still has, I'm going to say at this point, a gap of $800,000? The bottom line has a gap of another $400,000. That's $1.2 million, and there is a tax increase in there that has to be discussed. That's another $2.8 million, and there's already PESRs, $1.75 million that we are discussing. So, there's, even though our numbers are looking like they could have been manageable, certainly before the tax appeal, there's still a lot of issues that have to be addressed. And so, I would invite the public out to our May 8th meeting. It's in this room here. It's a great opportunity to discuss and to have your voice heard, but also to hear the board members in terms of their efforts to work with us to get to the best budget possible in June. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Jones, the, I know we didn't do line-by-line like we did at the, at the budget meeting, but part of the reason we were able to reach that reduction is, is we're planning to defer some issues that are on our long-term facilities plan to later dates. So, we were originally presented, I think, with $4 million. I think, is it my correct that the current reduction is now down to 2.3, or did we reduce it below that?
2.4 million right now.
2.4.
And this budget allows for 1.8
Right.
...in projects, if we can hold on to that. And so, you're talking about our long-range facility projects.
Correct.
And those projects, our budgets typically have allowed for about $900,000 of money is dedicated to that. When we have opportunity to find other money in the budget, we look for that. And so, this budget here did have $1.8 million, but the projects, as you've indicated, they total much more than that on an annual basis. And so, roofing is a big ticket item, and any of the other projects across the district would fall into that $4 million that you're talking about that's now, has been, some of those projects pushed back so that we are at 2.4 million right now.
So, we're not cutting those issues, we're deferring those issues.
Those long-range projects don't go away. The roofing issue stays with us even if we defer them.
All right.
Okay.
That brings us to the first public comment. Period. Ms. Burns? No one signed up? Does anyone want to come up that came in late? Had a hat on when it came in? I didn't mean you.
Steve Verdis. I live in Flowers Mill in Langone. When I saw this new, I had downloaded the revised one from the 2nd of April, yesterday. And when I looked again today, it was a different one with the same date, and it had, you know, also, it was a pretty long explanation of, of the tax appeal. So, you know, one of the problems that we have, and I don't know, and I think only the state can solve this stuff, is our biggest employer, which is really the hospital, I don't know what they pay in tax, even if they pay in tax anything, a contribution in lieu of taxes. But we, you know, this is the third time that we get hit pretty big from these large employers not paying what I consider their fair share of taxes. But we can't solve that problem. We, we can solve the problem by raising the taxes because we have to go on year-to-year and get enough money to run the school district. So, the first thing I would, I would venture to say is unfortunately, you're going to have to raise taxes, and that I'm sure will be a fairly large tax increase across the board to people. But I don't see any way out of it because in previous years, when you deferred these things, they didn't get done. And then, when you decided to do them, the cost is astronomical. At one point, we had like a pro forma that showed we owed somewhere in the neighborhood of $60 million in deferred maintenance in the schools. And it's just, you know, an old school becomes an old school because of no maintenance. And these are all problems, and I don't see any way we can get out of it without some help from the people in Harrisburg. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of hope for the people in Harrisburg because they've proved in the past they are willing basically to do nothing and let things ride forever. So, that's all I have to say about that. So, thank you very much.
Okay. It's no one else. The following items are for approval at the public meeting. 2.01, the tax appeal for the Oxford Valley Mall properties that Mr. Jones just talked about. 2.02, the school resource officer interagency agreement with Lower Southampton Township. There's bids for approval at the April 23rd meeting, overnight trips, homebound instruction, out-of-district placements, and Sunday facility usage. That brings us to our committee of reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hellenbeck?
Well, I don't have much to follow up on in the business operations since Mr. Jones just reviewed it all. Just as a reminder, the next business operations meeting is May 8th here at 6:30. It will be all about the budget, so I recommend everybody, anybody that has, wants their voice to be heard, that's the time to come out and speak on that. I also have the educational development meeting since Ms. Boyle's not here. So, the education development committee, we met, I guess, two Thursdays ago, March 28th, for about an hour. The curriculum and instruction department outlined summer programs for students along with staff. Of particular interest, the entire boards are the following recommendations: permitting students to take their one-on-one devices home over the summer. Right now, all the kids have to turn them in and then get them back. We're, the board, the committee is recommending that we are able to let the students take them home over the summer. The discontinuation of the summer elementary reading and math invention program in 2019, and converting the traditional summer, summer school to an online hybrid model where students attend three days a week and work at their own pace until completion. In Board Docs, board members and the public can find the presentation from the meeting and more detailed information about each of these topics discussed. Our next meeting is scheduled for May, I believe it's the 14th, 16th? One of those days. We'll follow up with that, at which time, we will be discussing summer programs. And again, those meetings are here, so it would be great if some active participants came out to hear about the education of the children. May 14th. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Parentano, since I wasn't at facilities and planning, can you take that one?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. On May 13th at Carl Sandberg Middle School, the facilities and planning committee met. We discussed topics, the demographic study. We had a initial presentation, more complete presentation we'll be giving at a board meeting at a later date. We discussed rental fees to our organizations that rent our facilities. These include both profit and nonprofit organizations, and a way to restructure some of our fees to help our local organizations be able to continue their efforts working with our, with our community in our, in our facilities. We discussed briefly the GISA program that we're entering into an agreement. We'll hear more about in the future with the IU and Lower South Elementary School. We had just a plot, plan, presentation on the proposed Verizon cell tower. It was only a presentation. There was really no discussion on it other than the plot plan. We discussed bus purchases, to which the committee moved a recommendation for the school district to add bus purchases to this year's budget. We took a brief, actually, more than a brief look at the long-range facilities plan and how those deferments will be required due to budget pressures. And we visited again the Idlewood issue. For those that don't know, Idlewood, which is behind the high school, is totally closed down due to problems with a type of beetle that's infested, not only in Idlewood, but all through areas in the mid-Atlantic and Atlantic coast, destroying the trees. We're trying to figure out a way that we can clear an area so that the high school and their science departments and whatever department would want to use it be able to reengage in Idlewood and give that experience to our students to go out in the, you know, real situation like they were able to do in years past. And there'll be more on that at a future meeting.
The Verizon presentation? Not presentation, you just said plot, plan?
Yes, they just...
Who did, who gave, who did that?
That was done in-house. Mr. Traska just presented the plot plan that Verizon has set forth to the district for consideration. There's been some, you know, talk about it, both at public meetings as well as on social media. This issue will come before the Lower Southampton Township supervisors at some point for zoning and planning. And I assume, and Mr. Torente can jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, that they'll have to get clearances for the township before they would come back to us for this board to decide whether or not we would, you know, accept such a lease on, on our property.
They would probably need conditional use approval by the Board of Supervisors in Lower Southampton Township, or a special exception from the Township Zoning Hearing Board.
So, just to be clear, though, the Lower Southampton Township, whether it's the zoning special appeals or the Board of Supervisors, will get this issue first to be voted on before we do?
That's correct. They would have to approve the use.
And at least at this point, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is only a proposal.
That's my understanding at this point.
Mr. Parentano, could you take policy also?
Sure. Mrs. Boyle's absent this evening. She's our policy chair.
Excuse me. Before we go further, what is the next meeting date for the Facilities and Planning Committee meeting? May 16th?
It's May 16th at Miller.
16th? I just want to make sure that...
No, no, it's May 16th at Miller.
Thank you. At Miller or at Maple Point?
Miller.
Miller. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Feather, I forgot to mention that. Thank you for, thank you for catching that. And of course, the public is welcome to attend. Next board policy meeting will be on Tuesday, April 16th, in this boardroom. We'll continue with PSA, PSBA policy updates, introduction, review of policy series... We'll continue with PSA, PSBA policy updates, introduction, review of policy series 300, which deals with employees, and review of section 200 pupils' class rank. That will be 6:30 on Tuesday, April 16th, in this board meeting room. Thank you.
Wait, I, I want to just clarify, the, the facilities meeting was originally the 15th because a lot of people are saying that. The date was changed, though, to the 16th. So, the meeting for facilities is the 16th, for those of you that think it's the 15th. It was, of May, it was changed.
It should, it should note on the handout that's in here, in this room, says 15th. It should say the 16th. Online, it says the 16th, but that was a mistake on the handout.
Okay, there will be no IU board since that's Ms. Boyle only. The Nishamni Education Foundation, Mr. Feather?
The Nishamni Education Foundation board met yesterday afternoon here at Maple Point. At the meeting, they discussed this past weekend's third annual Harlem Wizards game, which is a fundraiser for the NEF. The event was a huge success with over 750 tickets sold and approximately $4,000 raised for the foundation. By all accounts, a great time was had by all. Our dream team gave it their best shot, even managing to outscore the Wizards for the third quarter with a little help from the scorekeeper.
I don't remember it that way.
That's what I'm told. Thanks to the players, coaches, and many students, and adult volunteers who came out on that Saturday night to support the NEF. I understand that our superintendent also had a very good game.
I don't, I don't remember it that way. The founder is Ty Jones.
The foundation's alumni committee is seeking nominations for the first annual Nishamni Alumni Achievement Awards. The deadline has been extended to Friday, April 19th, and nominations can be submitted online at www.nishamni.org/achievement. Raffle tickets for two restaurant gift card baskets are for sale at each school main office until May 23rd. Each basket is worth over $200. The next NEF board meeting will be held Monday, May 13th, at Maple Point, 4:00 p.m. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA liaison, Mr. Piratano?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Let me remind board members of a PSBA advocacy day, 2019 is April 29th, starts at 8:00 through 2:30 in Harrisburg. You'll join PSBA members from all over the state that will be making rounds with our legislatures to talk about issues related to public education. If you want to attend, please contact the superintendent's office and they will help you make the arrangements to attend. In this April's PSBA bulletin, there's a, an article in there, I just want to read a couple excerpts from that are apropos for tonight's presentation, concerns budget pressures and funding. When superintendents were asked to select their biggest expected challenges in the next year, the choice most often by nearly 75% of superintendents was budget pressure and funding, with continued increases in mandated costs such as pension contributions and charter school tuitions, leading the survey, which comes as no surprise. When asked to select the biggest source of budget pressures, the school district superintendent selected pension at 60% and charter school tuition at 55%. We had a meeting last time where we talked about, you know, what we spend here just in charter school tuitions. And it's just not here, it's statewide, these are issues. Between 2010 and 2017 school years, mandatory pension contributions increased more than 418%, going from 2.9% of all current school district expenses to 13.9% in just six years. At the same time, mandatory charter tuition payments have increased 72%. These two items alone in the 2016, 2017 school year cost all Pennsylvania school districts over $5 billion. That's 5 billion. Due to these and other budget pressures, superintendents reported that their school districts are being forced to raise local property taxes, draw down their fund balances, reduce staffing level, increase class sizes, and reduce the number of programs and services they provide. I can say that is something we are working very hard with our, our superintendent and our business administrator, Mrs. Markowitz, to try and avoid those at all cost. In many cases, these are the same types of actions school districts have been forced to consider and make for the last several years. These results send a clear signal to policymakers. First, increased school district spending is primarily the result of increase in mandatory costs that the school districts have little or no control over. And second, the steps schools have been forced to take to balance their budgets have the potential to negatively, negatively impact student achievement. Solutions to reduce or curtail soaring mandated costs present their own set of issues. For example, despite pension reform legislation in 2017, pension costs are projected to continue to increase for years to come for both public schools and the state pension contributions that account for half of Peasars' costs. As progress is made in reducing Peasars' $44.5 billion unfunded liability over the next 15 to 20 years. So, avoiding the obvious pessimistic remarks, we are in, glad to say, I think, in a little bit better shape than most districts. We've been preparing for this for years, but as you can see through Mr. Jones's presentation, we had stopped deferring facilities maintenance costs over the last couple of years while we did building projects. It's not something we want to get back to doing, but the budget pressures are forcing us to look in that direction. I know Mrs. Hollenbach is part of the education committee, has spoken many times about her reluctance to reduce or curtail any educational programs. I think for all of us, that's a last ditch, what would you say? Last ditch?
Resort.
Resort, thank you, for us. And I believe it is. So, I appreciate the, the work we've done on the budget. We still have lots of work to do. I would like to hope to say that we could avoid tax increases, but I, you know, wait to see what we can do and where we can generate more revenue. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piratano. He's got a four-page article for that. Mrs. Bowman, Tech School, please?
Yes, good evening. The tech board last met on March 25th. It was also our board recognition dinner, so it was an opportunity where the students got to show off a little bit of their culinary arts for, our culinary art talent for us. This week, the Bucks County Technical Students will be competing in the Skills USA competition. They leave tomorrow morning, so I just want to give a shout out to our Nishamni students and their classmates and wish them good luck as they travel to Hershey. They'll be in Hershey from Wednesday morning until Friday afternoon, competing in the Skills USA. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 23rd.
Thank you. That brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone who wishes to follow Mr. Rotis to the podium? Feel free.
I do, you know, the charter school situation is a mess. These legislators, which are elected by us, have done nothing to alleviate the problem caused by the charter schools. I mean, we have taken it upon ourselves to do a cyber school, which will save us a lot of money. How do we get this through to the parents? I don't know. They always want to go somewhere else where it's perceived by them to be a savings, but it's not. It's killing all the public schools, public school districts in the area. It's really atrocious. And, you know, we should bring Frank Ferry in here one day and use him as a whipping boy because, you know, there's nothing, they don't do anything unless they're told to do it. And that's, I find that's a problem. I do have a, a short thing, but I don't think we could do it. I think unless surta tax out here would lessen for the school district. But I, I do want to, on a more positive note, I do want to say, I attended the Southeast Pennsylvania Debate League Dinner Monday night, and, you know, Nishamni is pretty well represented there, and they had some people that went to the semifinals and the finals. I've been a judge there for about 15 years, and I don't think these kids get the credit that they deserve. I know it's not a, you know, a sport that's out there and gets all the paper coverage, but it does help a student ability to get up before their classmates or to, in front of adults, and be able to argue a point and talk about it in a coherent manner. And I think they do a fantastic job, and I always, you know, on days I saw, I'd tell them, go after debate team. You'll learn, you know, to speak in front of a crowd. When you graduate, you may be, have told, you're going to address the group today and you won't know what to do. You gotta, you have to get up and do it. And I think they deserve a lot of credit for that because it's, it's not easy to speak in, in front of adults or people on the opposing side and argue your point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Any future topics? Board comment?
I, I have board comment, which I don't normally, but I just want to follow up on some things that Mr. Piratano said. Yes, I am on the education committee, and I feel very strongly and passionately about that. We are here for the education of the children, so I'm always looking to have improvements made to their education. I am also the chair of the business operations meeting, so I understand the financial burdens that we are on, that we're all facing, and none of the choices are going to be easy going forward. And I want everybody to remember to please come out to these meetings to hear from yourself. They are much more interactive than the board meetings are. So, if you want answers to questions and have engagement a little bit more, they are the meetings to come to. And I do want everybody to understand that nothing is personal or anything like that. We, as the board, have to do what's best for the entire district, and they are very, very difficult decisions that we have coming up. Thank you.
Steve, you want to go? Mr. Feather?
Are you paying attention? I just want to quickly answer Mr. Rotis at a couple of questions. You're correct about St. Mary's, nonprofits, you know, don't pay taxes, it's why they're Most areas where you have a large employer, it's payroll taxes, but since the district doesn't have an EIT, it doesn't get any revenue out of that as well. In order for the district to have an EIT, it would have to be shared by all six municipalities. I think only half the municipalities currently have an EIT imposed. Even if we had an EIT, in school districts, it's not revenue enhancement like it is for townships and school districts, it's revenue offset. So, if we raise $5 million through EIT, we have to lower our property taxes by $5 million. So, it works out as a swap. What it does do, though, is it broadens your tax base, at least takes some load off the homeowners and property owners of the district, who now basically bear the full brunt of the Peasars, our 50% obligation to Peasars. So, our 28 million gross, our $14 million net obligation is all spread along property owners to pay for that. Our other two biggest employers, Sesame Place, they're capped by a state law that caps the amusement tax at $500,000. So, they could make a billion dollars there, and the most we can generate from them is $500,000. That has to be done at the state level. And, you know, Oxford Valley Mall, which is the single biggest tax revenue for the district, you know, retail has taken a beating over the last 10 years, and I don't see that situation changing anytime soon. Mr. Rotis, Mr. Rotis, Mr. Jones laid out, which is basically a $5.5 million structural deficit. Personally, I don't have a problem with relying on budget, excuse me, on reserve funds, because that's why you have them, but the problem is, is reserve funds eventually run out, and then you don't have no reserves. So, we have to find a way to fix these structural issues. Ben Salem Township pays $17 million a year in charter school top. 17 million in charter school cost. Thank God we don't have that problem here. I said at the other meeting, charter schools are there for a reason. There are some kids that do benefit from it. The legislators have it because there's people across the state asking for it. How it's tailored, though, and how it's afforded is a totally different argument, and I agree with you 100% there. I've had these conversations with Frank Ferry, I've had these conversations with Tommy Tolson. In fact, Frank's one of the few legislators I've spoken to that actually has an idea how to address Peasars through bond issues. But the problem is, is he's still, according to the last conversation I had with him, cannot get 100% accounting for what the bond would have to look like to actually solve the pension problem. So, the people that are calculating the pension needs still can't state exactly how much they would have to raise to do it. So, while we would all like to whip our politicians, and we're sometimes not exempt from that either, there are some people out there with ideas. Problem is, the state is so wide and diverse, it makes it very difficult to get things done. So, we'll keep up the pressure, we need the public to keep up the pressure, and we have to find more solutions. It's simply how it is. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out. And Mr. Jones, did you get a three-pointer?
That line didn't exist when I played basketball. I can't shoot from that far away.
I heard, I heard you did fantastic.
I heard you did fantastic, right.
So, obviously, we have our challenges to face, and, and that's, that's been said. And with that in mind, despite challenges, it's up to us to keep solving those problems. And we'll continue to do that. Obviously, we need the help from, from the public as well, and from hopefully some politicians in higher places than us. But, but with that being said, life still goes, still goes on. And to dovetail a little bit more, we, we tend to talk a lot about the, the achievements of some of our athletes around, but I happen to have a nephew who dances professionally, and he's just as much an athlete. Some of the music, you know, the fact that, again, we've been made a best community for music education, that really says a lot. And I don't think our musicians get enough, enough credit. One of the neat things in Nishamni at the high school level, one of my neighbors, Adriana Fisher, ranked number one in Region 6, she's a vocalist. She and Madeline Galvez, I hope I get that name right, along with Connor Menzel, who's a percussionist, Vinnie Angelina, who plays upright bass, there's another person who plays upright bass, whose name I don't have at the moment. They went to the States in Pittsburgh not too long ago. And, and so, just very proud of them. Again, these are Nishamni people. Despite whatever, whatever things they had to overcome, they managed to put on a great show. The show must go on, right? So, that being said, too, the band, the, all the bands at Nishamni, they, they competed recently down in New Orleans, and very successful trip. There were maybe about five or six bands that competed, and- There were maybe about five or six bands that competed, and all of our bands, every last one of them placed. Symphonic Band Orchestra, Wind Ensemble, the two jazz bands, they all placed, mostly first place. And so it's the fact that we, again, I talk about STEM a lot, but it's really, and the one thing I really love about this district is that we add that A, we make, we talk about STEAM. So the arts is also a very important part of that. Innovation and creativity is something that, at the end of the day, if, obviously, we're promoting that and we're pushing that, and the students are taking full advantage of that, and just seeing, too, as a parent of a band member, you know, I look at the incredible work that's done by the parents, too, to support these kids. So we're all in this together, and when we all work together, we can make some really wonderful things happen despite whatever challenges. So I remain optimistic that we can overcome this challenge as we've done every year. You know, again, new problems, but it's not a bad thing. It's just a new problem, and it's something that has to be overcome and solved. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
I, as well as Ms. Hollenbach, don't usually make a whole lot of comments. However, I would like to start out by saying, I, for one, would never want to increase taxes and really am opposed to it as much as possible. However, we are in a very difficult situation at this point, and we have to consider all options. Unfortunately, we're not getting the help that we were supposed to be getting from the state financially. So we do need to do what's necessary without cutting programs, hopefully at all. On the Facilities and Planning Committee, we are trying to make sure that we are taking care of our buildings and our infrastructure at a rate where we are maintaining them properly but not having to defer so much, where we are having to repair and replace things at a rate that's going to cost us more than just doing maintenance over a period of time. But it all costs money. So we've developed that committee, and we're trying to do these things over a shorter, hopefully, period of time that's not going to cost us X number of dollars and cause us more headaches than what we're trying to avoid in this interim or in this short period. I also want to say thank you to our students who provide this artwork and provide these opportunities for us to see what we're doing throughout the district. I would also like to thank our Tech School students for their competition, because it is important. It's important for us, it's important for them, and I think they do a great job representing the Nishamni across the board. In closing, I would just like to say, with that, please come out to our committee meetings. They're very important. We need to hear from all of our residents, all of our taxpayers, all of the people who are very important, parents, and even students for that matter, so that we can actually do what's best for the district as a whole. So thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for being here, and have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? The only thing I wanted to end with was, I was thinking when I was hearing different board members and even myself talk about the budget. One thing I think we always had to be cognizant of is that budgeting is not a static process. So decisions we make today or decisions we make last year affect future years. So it's an ongoing process, and we always have to keep that in mind. With that, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.